Good evening. I'm Kathleen Choudhury, and on behalf of the five building PTAs in each school and our area council board, I'd like to welcome you all to the Peters Township School Board Candidate Forum. We begin every area council meeting, PTA meeting, and school board meeting with the pledge of allegiance, and we felt it was appropriate here. So if everyone would stand, we will do the pledge of allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, just as for all. Thank you all for coming tonight. We really appreciate it. And Lori McRoberts is here, too. The two of us are on the area council board, so we're trying to keep things moving tonight. I'd next like to introduce the nine candidates, and they are seated, and they will answer all the questions, and they will come up in ballot order. We did it that way for fairness. The first candidate is Scott Myers. Sherri Payne. Thomas Russell. Rebecca Bowman. Joe Deegan. Dan Taylor. Vasu Malapati. Lisa Anderson. And John Schneider. Thank you all for joining us. We were saying earlier that I feel bad for them because there are going to be a lot of constraints with their time today, so I really do appreciate all the time that they took to prepare to be here tonight. Next, I'm going to introduce our moderator, and that's Brian Schill. Brian is the Executive Director of the Peters Township Chamber of Commerce, where he has held this position for the past eight and a half years. He is a retired U.S. Air Force pilot from the 171st Air Refueling Wing at Pittsburgh International Airport, and is called the South Hills' home for the past 30 years. So I'd like to welcome Brian to get us started in coordinating tonight.
Thank you very much. They're clapping for you, not for me, right? Everybody ready? All right. We'll start off with the rules tonight. How about that? So we all know you're in ballot order. You'll have a two-minute opening remark, which will be given in ballot order because candidates can cross-file. We have used the ballot order from the Republican Party primary ballot posted on the Washington County website since all 10 candidates appear on it. Questions from the community were combined and ranked in order of popularity of the topics received. For fairness, names will be pulled for the first candidate to answer the question portion. Then we'll continue with the same question in ballot order. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the same question. A red flag will appear when 10 seconds of time remain. The moderator, that's me, will end their time if necessary. The one-minute conclusion wrap-up statement will be handled the same way as the questions. This is not a debate, it's a forum. If someone in the community has additional questions, a handout was given with contact information for each of the candidates. So if there's no questions, we'll get started. So we'll start with our two-minute opening statement. Mr. Myers?
First of all, thanks for being here. This is awesome. After spending seven hours today at an investor conference where I literally stared at a computer screen, actually seeing live people is a blessing. So thanks for hosting this today. My name's Scott Myers. I've been in Peters Township for over 35 years. My wife Melissa and my daughter Isabel's up there. I have four kids. My wife's been here for 46 years, 47 years next week. So, and I have four kids, a 12th grader, Isabel, Henry's an 11th grader, Isaac's a 9th grader, and Zach is a 7th grader. Besides our rather large, small family, I have a rather large extended family. Dad's up there, and my grandmother, my mother-in-law. I have five brothers and sisters in different parts of the township. All of their kids go to Peters Township if they're of age yet, so needless to say, we have a big network here in Peters Township. I have somebody representing that's in my family in every one of the schools. For me, my career, I was, started off for the first 12 and a half years in the accounting/auditing field at Ernst &amp; Young, PricewaterhouseCoopers, and then Schneider Downs, all excellent firms, learning the different businesses and practices across this great state. Spent most of my time in Western Pennsylvania and along Route I-80. My last year at PWC, I got to audit a little oil and gas company, and I ended up joining them after my time at Schneider Downs, where I served nine years as the Chief Accounting Officer, and the past three and a half as the CFO. So needless to say, my area expertise are finances, human resources, information technologies, and the same. Besides my work experience, I'm very active in the community. I've been scout master for either the PAC, or the troop, or committee member for over 10 years at Trinity 1320, and I'm very active in the wrestling programs in the township. So that's just a little bit about myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Dr. Payne?
I want to first start off by thanking the area council for hosting this event. We really do appreciate it. And I also want to take a moment to acknowledge the four incumbent directors behind me, because being a school director is a volunteer position, and these folks have taken a lot of time out of their schedules to support our school district. So while I'm an opposing candidate, I do want to say in a respectful manner that we do appreciate how far they've brought along the school district so far. Little bit of background about myself. I am an educator. I've spent 26 years in higher education, and I presently serve as the Vice President of Enrollment for Wayneburg University. But I also serve in the capacity of supervising the facilities area, the maintenance, the dining, and the housekeeping, as well as the admissions and financial aid offices. And really, this background is the reason that I am running for the school board. Really, education is my wheelhouse, and I think in this pandemic era, education is at a crossroads in our country, and I think the experience that I bring is a different perspective than those represented behind me. My family and I moved to Peters Township about five years ago. My daughter Sophie does go to Bauer Hill School District, and we do love Mr. Killen. We think he's a wonderful teacher. We moved to the district because of the superior educational system and because of the comparatively low tax rates, and I really am running to keep that intact. I believe in transparency and decision-making. I believe in responsiveness to the community. I believe in advocating for students, for community members, and I believe in fiscal responsibility. And I feel that I've acted that way as a candidate, and I would be happy to serve you in that same capacity as a school director. So before I finish today, I would kindly stand before you and ask for your vote next Tuesday. Thank you.
My name is Thomas Russell, and I chose to run for the school board this year because after the last election season, I felt a calling to do more than just talk about helping out and giving back to my community. I wanted to actually put my strong convictions and moral to use to help guide Peters Township School District. I did not grow up here in Peters, but I did grow up in Washington County. While growing up in Washington County, I always viewed Peters Township as a great school and community to raise a family in. I did grow up with a mother that was a special education teacher. She was a teacher that did more than just teach. She gave her students a pseudo-parent figure that helped them see the possibilities in life and prepare them for life after school. Also, my father came from a rich background of history and a community service, and chose to serve his community by being on the school board for over 20 years. It was always a goal of mine to help my community wherever I ended up by serving on the school board. My parents were great role models in showing me how to be selfless and serve the community. I've taken their examples and used them in my professional career, which has allowed me to be a very dynamic individual. My career in the energy industry has taken me all over the country in the last 10 years. It is a high-pressure global industry that I've thrived working under that pressure to find common ground with people from all over the world and different backgrounds. I've always attacked new opportunities with a thirst for knowledge and continued learning so that I could contribute as quickly as possible to whatever job I came across. In the same breath, the most rewarding but also challenging job I've ever had has been being a parent, to join my girls, I see, as they learn something new and seeing them shape into their own persons. I also realized once my oldest started school that no one will care about her education as much as my wife and I. So in that, I feel that I could really serve the district with fresh perspectives and new ideas. I wanted to come back to one point. There are nine of us up here tonight. Eight of nine of us filed to be on both the Democratic and Republican ballot. That leaves only one candidate that has strong convictions and ideas that do not waver when times get tough. I've only filed to run as a Republican, and to me, that means something. So I want to say thank you to all the candidates who are volunteering their time to be here, and thank you for opportunity to serve my community. Good luck, and God bless to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, PTA. Thank you, Brian, for moderating. My name's Rebecca Bowman. I've been serving on the school board for eight years. I've lived here since 1983 with my husband. I have two sons who went through the school district all the way from start to finish. I had children in the school district for 23 years. For 27 years, I have served as a coach of academic activities in the district, National History Day, math counts, forensics, so I'm still available to Peters Township students. The important thing you want to know from me tonight is what do I bring to the school board table? I am a civil structural engineer with many decades of experience. I am also an attorney with experience in human resources and employment and construction law. I bring a flexibility because I'm also an arbitrator and a mediator. So I bring a skill set to the school board that is unique, and I would like to continue bringing that skill set to the school district. I have been particularly devoted because we are finishing up the high school construction project, working on remodeling the old high school into the middle school, and so that skill set is of particular use in dealing with issues associated with construction. So I would ask you to vote for me next Tuesday so that I might continue serving my unique skill set. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you to our area council, PTA, and to our moderator, Brian, for welcoming me here tonight. My name is Joe Deegan, and by way of getting to know a little bit about me, I grew up in a family with seven children, and yes, I had to eat fast. My mom was a nurse, and my dad was a public servant, a probate court judge. I met my wife Sue at Notre Dame Law School. Sue actually grew up here in Peters and graduated from Peters High School, and 18 years ago, we moved here as we agreed that it was a great place to raise a family. I have enjoyed living here and being involved through coaching, scouting, our church, and our schools. Our children, Joseph and Kate, both graduated from Peters, and our son Ryan is a sophomore, and he's currently hoping to keep an undefeated record in sections in volleyball. I am a partner with Ernst &amp; Young, where I am the Chief Operating Officer for a multi-billion dollar business, and I help my clients with improving their HR, finance, operations, and ways of working. Ernst &amp; Young encourages community involvement by its partners, given our purpose to build a better working world. The pandemic provided most of us the opportunity to reevaluate our lives, and for me, that meant renewing my commitment to our community. This past February, I, along with 16 other candidates, applied for the open board position. I was selected to join the board based on my professional experience, personal character, and demonstrated community involvement. Throughout my short campaign, and for those of you who follow social media, I've been attacked by members of both political parties in their efforts to further political agendas. I've been labeled and misrepresented. While each is entitled to an opinion, the harsh words spoken and written are indicative of underlying tensions in our society today. I am not a politician, and politics should not be part of this board. I pledge to remain nonpartisan with respect to my duties, and in so doing, I will continue to work in a cooperative, productive, and inclusive manner with my colleagues on the board, as well as with you, our students, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, PTA, and Brian for setting this up. I really appreciate it. My name is Dan Taylor, and I am a current school board member. I was appointed to the board similar to the way that Joe was to fill a vacancy back in 2017, and I ran in 2017 and have served that term. I'm looking to try to get another term. I would like to continue to serve Peters Township School District. I am outside of the school district. I am also the Chief Operating Officer for All Cloud Metal Crafters in Kansasburg, Pennsylvania. So my background has been in operations and manufacturing for 30 years, where I have a good background in finance, HR, IT, personnel, and manufacturing. So I believe a lot of those skills translate well into the board. I am currently the Chair of the Personnel Committee for the board, so we take care of all contract negotiations, employee matters, all kind of go through that section. I also am the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee that I recently went on back in January. I have four kids that have all graduated, or three of them have graduated from Peters Township High School, with one that will graduate in a few years. So one 2014 graduate, one 2017, one 2020, and one 2025. For those who are wondering, yeah, it's all with the same wife. So I'd like to, I'd like to continue to serve the district and do what I can to make this better, and it's already a great school district. Our test scores have continued to improve on the time that we've been on the board, and we, there's still room to improve. We're here to serve the public as well as the students, and the main thing for us is that to continue to drive the student test scores and make the value that St. Peters Township education continues to be well worthwhile. Thank you very much.
Hello to everyone. I'm Dr. Vasu Malapati. I'm very honored to be here with all the well-qualified future Board of Directors. I was born and raised in India, studied under the trees with the streetlights, migrated 40 years ago, and I'm living in Peters Township for 30 years. About my family, my wife is a pediatrician. I have two, three children, two boys, one boy is a doctor, one boy and girl is doctors, and another is a lawyer. They went to Peterstown High School Elementary School. I'm a retired physician. I have a lot of time. I can dedicate every day for the school board if I get elected. If not, I still volunteer my skills and time for the school, students, and for well-being. While I was in India, I met Mother Teresa, who inspired me to do voluntary medical missions. I participated about 50 medical missions in 20 countries. My main contribution for the school is to maintain positive way for both physical and mental health of the students, teachers, staff, and parents. We had to train and retrain ourselves to face both regular as well as COVID stress. Teachers are the foundation for the well-being of our students, not the school board. Board provides only a suitable environment. For healthy students, we need a good sleep, healthy diet, exercise, and good vision. If students are happy, they will get good grades. If the students develop life skills, self-confidence, self-image, they can face any unexpected life situations in the life or as a student. So I have the experience of both sides of the world, east and west. I can contribute as best as I can for the well-being of the students, and I would like your support. Thank you.
Thank you, area council, PTA, and Brian. My name is Lisa Anderson. I've been a resident for more than 20 years in Peters Township with my husband Steve, my two kids who went K through 12 through the district, and during that time, I served many years on PTA boards. I've served on the school board for two terms, and during that entire time, I have been the policy chairperson. I led the entire rewrite and update of our entire policy book, which was over 200 policies, and continually update those policies with legislative changes. I served on the negotiating committee in 2014-15 for the teacher's contract and ended up being the data person. So I obtained and analyzed the contracts for almost every district in Washington and Allegheny County for facts to support our position. I want to serve on the board because I'm passionate about public education. My dad was a steelworker who did not graduate from high school, and because I had a good public education, I was able to go to college and graduate from law school. I'm also Vice Chair of the Education Committee. I've really pushed for elimination of obstacles for students to get into honors and AP classes, and we have increased the number of students taking AP exams, which is an important part of becoming college-ready. I am the PT Board Liaison to Pennsylvania School Boards Association, or PSBA, where I attend weekly Zoom meetings with board members across the state to discuss educational issues. I'm acutely aware of the importance of lobbying legislators to pass favorable legislation and have been appointed to the Legislative Advisory Committee of PSBA. That PSBA committee relies on us to give feedback on potential legislation. I'm dedicated. I don't miss meetings. I come prepared. I ask questions, and I support the administration, which I think is the role of a school board member. I do have a website, votforanderson.com. I'd like you to visit it, and I would really be honored if I would have one of your four votes next week. Thank you.
My name is John Snyder. I want to thank everybody for the PTA and Brian setting me up and moderating everything. I'd like to thank the audience for coming out to learn about the candidates. I have been living in Peters Township for the last 10 years with my wife Dana and my two boys, age nine and 10, both going to Peters Township for the last 10 years. Before that, I grew up in South Park, right next door. I graduated in South Park in 1984. I went on to college at Washington and Jefferson College, where I was an All-American football player, and I ended up with an accounting degree, taking that to medical school. I went on to medical school in Cleveland, Ohio, became a podiatrist, and did my surgical training in Cherry Hill, New Jersey. After that, I moved back to the area in South Park, wanting to grow up in the same area and raise a family where I had grown up. While I was at South Park, I was on the school board for 16 years. While on the school board for 16 years, we built two schools, one of which without even raising taxes. We also remodeled another school. We took care of two teachers' contracts, managing those without raising taxes. I am here now looking for your vote for Peters Township, now the township that I reside in. I am actually active in the community, and I coach travel baseball here for Peters Township. I've been coaching for the last three years. At this time, our nine U Peters Township baseball is ranked number two in the state and number 38th in the nation as a ranking for travel. At this time, I'd also like to ask for your vote and anybody on TV on next Tuesday when we come out to vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we'll be starting to ask the questions. Just as a reminder, these questions are, the answers will be one minute, and we heard from Kathleen, one minute goes fast. So if you would please watch Mrs. McRoberts, so when you see the red, you've got 10 seconds left, and if we can all abide by that, I think we'll have a wonderful evening. As we mentioned, we will begin the questions randomly. We'll start with Rebecca Bowman for this first question, and then we will go in ballot order. Congratulations. You get to start the whole night. Okay. The first question. Across the country, school districts have been in the news concerning integrating critical race theory into their curriculum. Do you support this? Yes or no, and why? And do you support Peters Township School District decisions that are based on diversity/equity or based on merit? Again, it's a multi-question. So do you support the critical race theory? Yes or no, and why? And do you support Peters Township School District decisions that are based on diversity or equity, or if they're based on merit?
Okay, I think I can boil that down to two questions. Critical race theory, no. I believe in a curriculum that is fact-based. I do not believe that storytelling should preempt the facts. I believe in a complete course of history that is balanced, but fact-based. Excuse me. Second question presented a dichotomy that was not necessarily a real dichotomy, and that is between diversity and equity and merit. I believe in merit, absolutely, but I also believe that there are inequities in our culture that need to be addressed at the earliest possible level, and the earliest possible level is right where we are in school. If students have equal opportunities to learn, there will be no need for any interventions later because they will be able to achieve merit all by themselves. Now, do I go sit down, or do I question two? Okay.
Well, first, as I mentioned, political agendas in theory, such as critical race theory, have no place in our schools or as part of our curriculum. I do believe in diversity, equity, and inclusion. These are part of my basic human beliefs. Diversity is recognition of our identities and differences. Let's affirm our similarities and find value in our differences. Our teachers and students can and should learn from one another. Equity to me means that all students have equal opportunity to participate justly and fully, in our public education to reach their full potential, and to have fair access to information and resources. In fact, our special education program is based on principles of equity. Finally, inclusion. Let's find common ground in supporting a culture of belonging by actively seeking participation of those among us. And I would venture to say that we all want to feel included, especially those students who find themselves at times the subject of bullying. I will always support and celebrate uniqueness, fairness, and togetherness. And to those who are critical, ask yourselves, do you not believe in diversity? Do you not believe in equity? Do you not believe in inclusion? Thank you.
I am opposed to critical race theory or any other social teaching agenda being introduced into the school's curricula. That is not our place. That is not what we're here for. As a school board, we are in charge with ensuring the curriculum to be focused on the standards, the academic standards, and that's what a board's job is to do. That's what we have to make sure we do, and that is what we have done. You know, we see that in our, our students. There's, over the last five years, there's been an 82% increase in AP tests. We're consistently top 2% We're consistently top 2% in the state academically. We were the number-one school in the Keystone exams in 2019. That's because we focus on academics, because that's the job of the board, is to make sure that we do that. As far as diversity, equity, inclusion, merit, listen, it's about fairness. That's all it is. It's fairness. Everybody, every student should be treated fairly and have the opportunity to learn. Thank you.
Regarding critical racial theory, we had to learn from that history, and we shouldn't repeat again. So like in hospitals, we have some complication happen, we discuss, we learn from that, we try to not repeat again. So it's like a morbidity-mortality type. So we learn from a lot of things from the history and try not to repeat those things. And we had to help some people, those who get low grades. For some reason, they can't get, they don't have a role model, they don't have any help from parents, parents that separate her dues. They need to be helped, some kind of reservation or some help, whatever help we can do that will be helpful for the families. Thank you.
I do not believe that critical race theory should be taught in our high schools. However, I believe the term diversity, equity, inclusion have become unnecessarily politicized. Our district is founded on respect, responsibility, and honesty. I do want the district to affirm the experiences and values of diverse cultures, to address barriers to equitable access to education, and to be inclusive and provide a sense of belonging and support. I will continue to leave curriculum writing to administrators and teachers, which is written to state standards and not insist that it be written in favor of a political agenda. I am proud to give support to those groups in our community that are often discriminated against and will advocate against anyone that threatens the ability of all of our students to feel safe and accepted while in school. Thank you.
The first question about the critical race theory, I do not support or believe in it. I do not believe in rewriting history. I believe in learning from history and moving on from your mistakes. The second question about having diversity or equity, I believe in equality and merit for all. I have never been given anything. I've worked hard for it. Everyone that works with me has had the same, and that's what I believe in. Thank you.
As for critical race theory, the quick answer is no for several of the reasons that have already been said. So I really want to talk about diversity and inclusion, and I think I have a pretty unique angle on this. I have two African-American brother-in-laws who live in the district, five nieces and nephews. My brother's wife is Taiwanese. To say our family is inclusive is exactly what it is. And the way we achieve this is by treating each person as an individual, understanding their background, seeking to understand our differences. And when there are differences, don't assume it's because the color of the skin or the beliefs that they were brought in. Maybe it's an idea, and the more you talk about it, the more you understand. This country, this school district, needs to stop putting people into categories. We're all creatures under God, and I believe that we treat all people equally, and then when someone steps astray, you have to discipline appropriately. Too often in the district, I've seen group discipline instead of individual discipline, which I am not for. So again, treat each other like you would like to be treated. Thank you.
Gosh, it's really difficult to go as number eight when you agree with most of what you've heard before, but critical race theory is such a politically-charged term, it's such a politically-charged concept. And one of the reasons that as candidates, we are allowed to cross-file in the state of Pennsylvania for school board is that it is to be a nonpartisan position. We're not supposed to take political positions. We shouldn't, we shouldn't take national politics and localize them at the school board. The things that we need to be focused on are the school board, or some of the things the other candidates have already mentioned. So I do not support teaching critical race theory in our schools. However, I do support diversity, equity, inclusion programs, provided that they have specific overview, overview from the curriculum writing. I think that this whole concept and this whole discussion that's been happening in the district has almost been a distraction of the things that we really need to be focusing on as a school board, the academics, the mental health of our students, and I know we're going to be covering that. So I'll stop now, but the answer is no to the critical race theory. Thank you.
Didn't realize after the first round, being tall kind of hurts you. Can't quite hear me good enough, so we'll try this again. To answer the first part, I do not agree with the teaching of critical race theory in schools. It causes division and makes children feel bad or ashamed of who they are. The one side feels bad about being portrayed as victims and saying they are no good. The other side feels bad because they are portrayed as bullies and what they will consciously or unconsciously be. I think we do need to be conscious of the issue of race in our country and in our school district, but we need to do that by teaching the rich history of the U.S. How when there was slavery, there were great Americans like Harriet Tubman that ran the underground railroad and freed slaves. The United States lost more than 620,000 Americans in the Civil War to try to bring our country back together and end slavery. The civil rights heroes like Martin Luther King Jr., who I'm still in awe of today because of how he was able to perform peaceful protests and demonstrations. We've also now elected a president and a current vice president, two of the most powerful people in the world that are minorities. I'm not saying we should shy away from the ugly parts of our history, but we should be rallying behind the successes and how far we've come in it. But as we talk about this, there are states that have also already mandated that you cannot teach critical race theory or that you have to, and they will withhold funding. So if that does come down from the state level, it doesn't matter what any of us think or say, we need that funding here. And as far as merit-based, I believe it all should be merit-based, and that should include everybody. We should give them the tools to be able to succeed and be, be good on their own merit. So thank you.
Mr. Russell. You're the lucky winner this time. Here is our second question. How will you balance the interests of students, teachers, and administration with that of the taxpayers?
I think the biggest thing with that is transparency of what we are doing with the money. I moved here just over a year and a half ago from Cannon-Mack School District, knowing that I would be paying more in school taxes. And I did that because of the quality education that my kids are going to be able to receive here. But I think people want to know, okay, we're going to have a max millage increase year after year of a year. Well, what are we getting in return for that? I think we should strive for more common-sense things, like I said, with transparency with the community of what we're doing with that money, and also maybe strive to maybe have a one-point millage increase instead of doing the max after every, every year. I know it's very tough. This year has been very tough on us with COVID, and we've had extra costs as far as buying laptops and computers for everybody, also with building an online curriculum. So I think the two main things is striving to do better and figure out how to pay for what we have now in place, and also the transparency with the community so everybody knows what we are doing with that money and being fiscally responsible. So thank you.
You ask a question as though there are only two ends of a line. It's a circle. The better the students do, the better the community is, the more our values rise, the better our students are, and the better the teachers are, who are attracted to come teach here because the opportunities are rich. We have incredible number of applicants when we have an opening, and the reason for that is that it's a rich and enriching school district. And that enables our students to go out and be the best possible people they can be in the world. That's what we're here to do, equip our students. And when we do that, everything improves. It's not a line. It's a circle. And doing the best that we can with the resources we have is how that gets accomplished. Thank you.
Yeah, very, very timely question, given tax day is coming up on Monday here. You know, I would say that our district has been very fiscally responsible. Even with the pandemic impacts, our budget spend is aligned with our five-year plan. And while there's a lot of data on our website, and I won't go through it, we've also had one of the lowest costs per student, combined with the highest ranking of academic performance of our students in the state. Now, we are able to achieve this return despite getting very little from the federal or state government. It's primarily coming from our local taxes. There are two areas that I commit to continue moving forward. One is, again, making sure that folks understand how we are spending that money, because that's hard-earned dollars that, that we all have. And secondly, is making sure that we team with the rest of the community. In fact, with councils, we make decisions around what type of families are we attracting and making sure that we can continue to spend collectively in a way that's fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Everyone hates taxes, including me. What's important is that you get a value for your tax. Our job is to make sure we drive the best value for the tax that you're paying. It's very analogous to a product. If the product costs are too high, people don't buy it, people move away. It's the same type of thing that we have with the school district. As I mentioned earlier, we're consistently in the top 2% of school performance, and we spend less per student than 77% of the other schools in the state. We are fiscally under control. We have to make sure that we are vigilant and continue to reduce where we can, but optimize where we must. Thank you.
There is a saying saying, "Bricks are bricks, people are people." We invest in people. So we should invest in our student's education. Every dollar we spend on education is worth spending, worth investment. I go for, even if we have to pay extra taxes, is worth spending, worth investment. Thank you.
I agree with those before me. I was going to talk about how we do keep taxes low and our academic achievement is high. So I'm going to focus on some reasons why we have to raise taxes, and sometimes it's beyond our control. And I'll, I'll just focus right now on charter schools, especially important because of COVID this year. The district pays tuition for Peters Township school students who want to go to cyber charter schools. We spend about $700,000 a year to pay for that tuition. Currently, we have about 622 students who still are getting their education remotely. If only a portion of those students prefer remote next year, and we don't have a remote option, we could lose a sizable portion to cyber charters, and it will cost us millions. We're advocating for legislative reform, but it's still going to be a very expensive process, prospect. So we have to provide a way to have a good option for remote learning next year to keep those remote students coming back with us and maybe attract those in current cyber charter schools. Thank you.
That question is exactly why I think that I'm running for the school board. After 16 years of experience in South Park in a bedroom community, they didn't have the expansive growth that Peters Township has. Raising taxes is not always the answer. Sometimes it has to be done, but in a community where you have businesses that are continuing to grow, you have communities that are continuing to build, you get tax base that's still coming into the district, sometimes you have to look at where your spending is and where your revenue is coming from. That's why I believe that I have a big advantage over a lot of other candidates here. Thank you.
Anyone who tells you that they are for not raising taxes at all does not understand the numbers and where we are with our state government. So one of the things I will just tell you is Governor Wu's plan of how he allocates the dollars to the Pennsylvania is disproportionately unfair to Peters Township. You need to understand that as a community owner and understand that when you go to the state. Now, what I look for is two things, value. Was this high school needed? Absolutely. This high school provides our students the opportunity so that when they go to the next level, they can compete against the other students across the country. But then you also have to look at the expense side. Is every dollar we being spent, is it being spent wisely? Are there other things that we can do? And finally, when I look at, and I wish there was more detail in the budget than there currently is, I love going through numbers. That's basically my job. And the final thing that I look at is for some private partnerships. We've started doing that as a community. I think that's a great way to offset some cost. If someone asked me to invest in the wrestling room, I absolutely would. No one asked the question. We need a better process here. Thank you.
I'm going to take just a different tack in answering this question because I think in a limited resource environment, accountability is advocacy. You want a person who can advocate for you at the state level. You want a person who can advocate for you at the federal level. I have that experience, folks. I do that at my day job. Three years ago, the state legislator proposed, the state legislature proposed a fee grant that was a $1,000 cut to each individual student. I took students to Harrisburg, we lobbied our, we lobbied our legislators, we wrote letters, we sent emails, we made phone calls, we even sent text messages. In this environment, a limited resource environment, it has to be more than controlling our spending. We have to work to change the allocation methods. And the way that you do that is by advocating. I know the state system, I know the federal system. Please let me do that for you. Thank you.
Dr. Payne. That's it. All right, this is another multi-part question. So if anyone ever needs clarification, please just let me know. I'd be happy to do that. Do you support continuing COVID protocols like masks, distancing, and continuing both remote and in-class learning? Do you support a vaccine mandate? And what sources will you consult for data and information to make these decisions?
Well, I can answer that easily. These are things that we're discussing at my university. I'm on the leadership team for Waynesburg University, and right now, we're determining what to do. But let me take you back to last summer. About a month before Peters Township decided to go five days a week, Waynesburg University announced that we would also have an in-person experience. And the way that we did that is the way that I would approach the decision for the fall. Well, I guess the board doesn't start until next year, but the way that we do that is we consult with our engineers, we consult with our architects, we see what the science is saying to us. And right now, what we're hearing are things like the mask mandate may be dropped for outdoor activity. They're looking at whether or not the mandate is necessary for indoor activity. And, you know, we're gathering this information. I'm doing this right now at my day job. I would love to be able to do that for the school board. I do support five-day in-person. We did send our daughter to the five-day in-person, but I also support remote instruction for those folks who do need it. And gosh, a minute goes fast. Thank you. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question real quick? Sorry.
Absolutely. Do you support continuing COVID protocols like masks, distancing, and continuing both remote and in-class learning? Do you support a vaccine mandate? And what sources will you consult for data and information to make these decisions?
I want to start by saying I think we have to give people the choice. And I think that was one of the best things that the school district decided was to give people the choice of what they wanted to do with their own children, whether they wanted to send them in school or they wanted to keep them at home. I think it's all about giving people the choice. You know, the vaccine is just, has an emergency use authorization right now. So you can't force that upon anybody to take that. So in my mind, any kind of mandate to take a vaccination, I personally will not be bringing my kids to the school. So I'm strongly against them doing that here at the district. I do believe there are some different studies you could see. I mean, CDC has partnered with different universities. You have University of Chicago. You have these other universities that are doing studies where there's no evidence of community spread within schools, and children are at very low risk of getting the disease and having hard side effects of it. Just to give some little glumness, but there was over 35,000 people that died under the age of 17 last year, and only 260 of those were had COVID. So it's something that happens anyway. So I would like to say, I would think there should be a choice to continue for parents to decide for themselves what they want to do with their kids. So thank you.
I had to bring my notes to make sure I didn't miss any parts of the multi-part question. Do I believe in continuing the mask requirement right now? I do. We still don't have complete information about how it works in close proximity. We keep shrinking this distancing requirement, but the mask mandate appears to be successful in providing some element of protection. And frankly, our kids are more adaptable than we are. In my observation, they've been more able to absorb the restriction into their lives than a lot of adults that I know. In terms of distancing, the school district has flexed as the requirements have changed. And we have been able to open at the beginning of the school year because we have the blessing in this district of having the space to adapt to the distancing requirements. And as the distancing requirements shrink, then we can go closer and closer to a normal context. Regarding to a vaccine mandate, that's not going to happen. Not only is it still an experimental drug, but we have never been able to require vaccines on a blanket basis. So, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. A lot to answer in one minute. But do I personally believe and wish that our children don't have to wear masks? Absolutely. I would say that the board and the administration and special mention to Dr. Fisher, we have been working with the experts, with scientists and others, to be as proactive as we can be. In fact, we were the first school in our community to go back to the classroom. And a requirement of that, however, was that we did have to social distance and still wear masks. Now, while we are required to follow those state-reliant mandates, we will continue to take that mindset in terms of working, in terms of how we can have our students return back to the classroom without a mask. As to remote, my son is remote. He fully plans to return back to school next year. However, I'm committed to making sure we have a best-in-class remote option on a go-forward basis. And again, with the vaccines, we are not looking to require that. Thank you.
Like taxes, nobody likes the COVID protocols. I'm not a big fan of them, but I don't think that most people realize that these were mandated by the state. We, as a board, actually had to sign papers that said we would do that to reopen. If we didn't, they could shut us down. So we have to do that in order to keep the school open and the kids going to school. As far as the vaccine mandate, no, you cannot mandate a vaccine to the students. That's not right. And we're not, I would not support doing that. As far as in-school or remote, I want to take this opportunity to clear up a point that's been out on Facebook. There is a message thread that basically says that I am against in-school. That is not true. The vote that took place in August of 2020 was about, my push was to go hybrid for 30 days and then go full-time remote, or full-time in-person. So that is not true. I have voted six times to keep school open and to have all the extracurriculars going. So I'd like to dispel that. Thank you.
Regarding vaccines, benefits versus risks. Vaccines are beneficial than the side effects or any. I recommend everyone should get vaccinated because if you get COVID, your symptoms will be less if you hadn't vaccination. If the 70% of the population get vaccinated, there will be herd immunity, then we can remove the masks, social distance, et cetera. So I recommend each and everyone to get vaccinated, please. Thank you.
I'm not in favor of a vaccine mandate. I, like Dan, voted for a hybrid option in the beginning. After I saw that our protocols were so good, I voted every time to keep five days in-person. But because I'd like to keep our remote students from going to cyber school, like I said earlier, I am for having a remote option next year. I agree with Dan. Again, masks, we don't like them, but most of the time, we don't have a choice. We are mandated. In addition to the mask rules, we were required to sign an agreement that will follow all the Health Department rules with regard to school closures, too. In fact, as a policy chair, I helped write the health and safety plans to ensure that they comply with the rules. We did have a plan for spring sport tryouts where we wrote that there would be no masks needed when in competition for outdoor sports like we had in the fall. But because Governor Wolf did not change his order, we had to actually pass an amended plan that said they were required at all times. Thank you.
I, like many of the board members up here, do not support vaccine mandate. I believe in choice. I do want to say that the current administration, teachers and board did a wonderful job by keeping the kids in school this year and shutting down schools whenever there were positive cases and then reopening schools. I continually support that. As for the mask mandate, at some point in time, probably not this school year, they will be removing masks, they will be a herd immunity, people will be vaccinated, outdoor activities. I don't believe in having a mask. This is never changing process. I deal with this on a daily basis and do support the decision as of now with the school district. Thank you.
Quick one. Note of the mandatory shot, absolutely in-person learning is so important. I remember in November when all the kids were forced to go home and a dramatic decline in my kids' grade averages and grades and the struggles that they had in that environment. In-person learning is, I believe, the most beneficial. Maybe some can do the remote, but it definitely wasn't what was best for my children. As far as the remote learning, I think the option has to be available next year. Whether we continue it or not has to be a cost-benefit analysis. We can't simply do everything for everyone. I think competing against charter schools might be beneficial, really, but we have to understand that cost, or else, again, that leads to higher taxes. So finally, you know, some of the rules, I want to make sure that somebody is requesting and challenging at the state level. For example, my son got contact trace last week. He was outside of three feet, inside six feet. My understanding, two weeks before that, he would have been allowed to play in his game. Even after a positive or a negative COVID test, he was still not allowed to participate. So we need to make sure we understand those rules and make sure that we do what's best. But the masks have been very effective in the school. Thank you.
You're in luck. We broke the system. Mr. Deegan, you'd be the first one to answer this final question for this evening. Children's mental health has become a popular topic. What is your position on incorporating mental health assistance into our schools? And how would you make this work with respect to the budget?
Yeah, excellent question. Now, we fortunately have many mandated staff training programs around suicide, recognizing abuse, prevention, bullying, substance abuse and awareness, as well as we do have a partnership with the Centerville Clinic to provide mental health services. However, this is an area where I feel we could be doing more and, in fact, may have to spend more. In fact, when I contacted our local United Way, they've reported that there has been a 31% increase in reported mental health cases this past year. In addition to the pandemic impacts of lack of connectedness, anxiety and fear, one of the biggest threats to the well-being of our students, especially our teenagers, is the pressure to achieve. I also don't want to forget about our teachers. They're actually tied with nurses as having the most stressful jobs today, and we need to also support them so that they can continue to bring their best to the classroom, our students and themselves. So I will continue to work with our board, the administration and our community organizations, such as United Way, to make mental health a priority for our students and teachers. And again, back to the transparency and accountability, making sure that we factor that appropriately into our budget. Thank you.
As Mr. Deegan stated, the school does have a lot of training for their staff. He mentioned suicide, bullying, substance abuse, child abuse, trauma. Beyond that, our counselors are trained, our teachers are trained, we have social workers and the ability to use Centerville Clinic to come in and help us if there are any issues. We try to, we use our student, our school resource officers to keep an eye on the kids and see if there's changes. You know, I think the other thing, especially during the pandemic, has been try to give the students the opportunity to do things that are normal. One of the things that we really pushed to do is not only open sports, but there was also a great push to try to get some of the theater and arts and singing back in. We worked with the administration, we, you know, they were doing the plays in the summer, and I think that's something that we have to do. We need to continue to look and see what more we can do. There's going to be an ongoing effect, and I'm committed to continue to look and find solutions. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question again? Mental. Can you repeat the question, please, again?
Children's mental health has become a popular topic. What is your position on incorporating mental health assistance into our schools? And how would you make this work with respect to the budget?
We need to train and retrain teachers, parents, and educate them about mental health issues and identify them at a very early stage and refer to the psychologist, behavioral therapist, whatever. Even to get a psychiatrist help, to get an appointment, it takes three months, as recently I was inquiring. So even primary doctor pediatrician can help us, can help. So what we had to do, early detection by the teachers, as soon as they identify, or by parent, they should contact, take the help of who, whether it was counselors or a pediatrician or even psychiatrist. So early intervention by recommendation. It's getting more and more because of this pandemic stress, because of isolation. So they had to increase physical exercise as well. Thank you.
Mental health assistance has always been important to the board. After the Marjory Stonem Douglas shootings, we had an FBI agent in to talk to district parents, staff about the ways to prevent similar acts of violence. The agent focused on the role of supporting students' mental health to promote a safe school environment, the importance of creating programs that establish meaningful connections between students, faculty and staff, addressing situations that lead to isolation, withdrawal and negative behavior, and promote positive climates. In almost every case of violence studied, he said there were missed opportunities for intervention to help a troubled student. I supported the administrators in bringing Rachel's challenge to the district to educate parents, students and staff about how to create a chain reaction of kindness. Some candidates want to address school safety by hiring a police officer in every building, but at a cost of about $100,000 per officer per year, I believe that money would be better spent addressing the mental health of students. Thank you.
Mental health issues have been on the rise, especially over the last decade. It is now increasingly difficult now with coming through a pandemic. There are certain issues in a school district where you can cut your finances. That is not one of them. We need to increase all efforts needed to help the kids get through any situations that they may encounter. Thank you.
I think we all, going through this year, could have used a little help with mental health. It was definitely a trying year, and I know for my kids in particular, competing at sports against a disadvantage or the threat of not being able to have their sports really, really would have ruined it. Luckily, we were able to have a lot of competition, and that really, really helped. So I think being in-person is one of the things. I think another thing is we have some good programs, and I'm willing to listen to other programs, but I think the thing is awareness and advocacy, which doesn't cost a lot of money. When you see something, say something. If you think something that's not right, make sure every teacher has some of the training to spot these items and get the help they need. But that awareness and training really doesn't have to come down to a lot of dollars. It just has to come down to some well-run programs. I'm sure the school has some. I'm not super aware of what they do for training. So I would encourage them to understand it and see if there's areas that we could improve when comparing ourselves to other districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mental health issues often manifest themselves in the grades that students achieve, right? You can see a precipitous drop when someone is having a mental health crisis. And I have kind of a unique perspective in that I'm seeing that. I get to see the transcripts that your seniors send in. I see what's going on in the senior year. And I can tell you, not just at Peters Township, but all over the country, there's been a precipitous drop in grades indicating a real mental health crisis stemming from the pandemic. And we really need to focus on that, especially in a high-achieving district like Peters, where students are really trying to get into the best colleges, they're really trying to have those high scores, pass the AP exams, and they're suffering from a mental health crisis and their grades are dropping, and it really starts to snowball. And we're seeing that at the college level as well. And so, yes, I do think that mental health is very important, especially now in this time, and I absolutely think that we need to address that through the budget process. Thank you. Thank you.
I think mental health is one of the most important things that I've talked about or thought about through this whole process. Our school is at the heart of our community, and in most communities it really is. And besides us parents, no one's going to spend more time with your kids than the teachers. So to continue training and education of our teachers, be able to recognize it early and be able to help students when they feel that there's something going on with them. This is, I think, where maybe the inclusion should come into play, is when they do see a kid feeling out of place or maybe feeling bullied or something, we should be able to have something in place to help them feel more included and include them in what's going on. So I think that's where we should focus on in expanding what we do now and also continue education for the teachers to be able to recognize this thing, because it is a dirty little secret in our country that nobody really likes to talk about as far as mental health and as far as keeping our kids safe. A lot of the people that do turn to violence and things are people that don't have undiagnosed illness, mental illnesses. So if we can be involved in that early and help them with that, it could stop a lot of those things. So thank you.
Yes, all the studies show that during COVID, the incidence of mental challenges among our children has doubled. The school district has a wide variety of tools and opportunities and techniques and training in play. In my opinion, uneducated as I am in this field, the most important ones are the ones that involve opportunities for students to talk, to express their concerns, their fears, their anxieties, and we have those tools in place. The second most important thing, though, is this is the one time when it takes a community. Each of us, as a parent, as a staff person, as a teacher, as a community member, needs to be empowered to observe and report. I have to say, for each of my children, a parent contacted me and reported a situation of which I was completely unaware. That's huge. We need to give each other permission to observe things like, gosh, Johnny's just really doesn't seem to be enjoying tennis anymore, or I noticed Sally's not eating her lunch. Those kinds of things are symptoms, and we need to be empowered, equipped, and informed so that as a community, a whole community, all of us, can act together to protect our children.
Mr. Taylor, you get to take us home. We'll now have the closing statements.
15 minutes?
20 minutes for you, sir.
Okay, good.
So the closing statement again is one minute, and then we'll close things out for the evening. There you go, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I think it's important that you're informed of what's going on and what the candidates believe. I'm really looking forward to hoping to be able to serve another four-year term for Peters Township School District. The next four years are going to be very important. During that time period, there is going to be another contract negotiation with the teachers' union. As the head of personnel, in my background with 30 years of union negotiations, I think that I'm very well-prepared to help lead that negotiation term. And, you know, this past summer, I actually was instrumental in helping the administration set up the memorandum of understanding with the teachers' union that actually brought them back to school. So school this year would not have been the same. It could have been very much like a lot of the other places here if we did not have that agreement. I really hope that I have the opportunity to serve the township and the residents and the students and serve another four-year term. I ask you for your vote next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you for giving this opportunity. I believe that my background and experiences make me a qualified candidate for the school board director. The knowledge and expertise that I bring to the table will be very beneficial to the school. My motto is, "Think globally, act locally." I had the opportunity to gather knowledge and ideas from all over the world, and I wish to bring to this, to the Peters Township School. Being on the school board would be a privilege and an honor, and I hope I will be able to serve and improve the well-being and health of these students. Consider to vote for me. Thank you.
When you go to cast your ballot, I want you to seriously reflect on the history of our district, where we are, what we have accomplished, and where we want to be in the future. Most of us seeking reelection have served more than one term. We have done so with respect for one another and support for our administration's ideas of our best to operate the district with the best interest of our students at the forefront of every one of our decisions. As school board members, we do not and should not vote as Republicans or Democrats. Do not use your vote to make this board partisan, please. It only takes one person to erode the community's trust in the board and its ability to make sound decisions and take focus away from the educational process. My record and dedication to this district speaks for itself. Watch meetings, visit my website, votforanderson.com, and ask others that are equally involved in district activities, and I truly believe you will see that I have their support. Thank you.
First, I would like to thank the PTA and Brian for putting this forum together. It's a wonderful way for the candidates to actually meet each other and also for us to be able to discuss amongst the community our thoughts and our ideas. And thank you guys for coming out. On Tuesday, I would like to ask for your vote. I believe that I bring a lot of experience and knowledge to the township. I've been sitting on a board for 16 years at South Park. I'm a business owner in the community, and I'm an active member and coach in the township. Before I take my boys out in the field, I always tell them one thing. I say, "Winners want the ball," and I'll ask them, "Who wants it?" Tonight, I want it. I want your vote. Thank you.
I've been here almost my entire life. I've had many opportunities to leave, and I never have. I'm so proud to be a member of this community, and this is a great school district, but there is more we can do. My promise to you is to drive the school district to even be better than it is today, to hold everybody accountable, to tackle those little low-hanging fruits, to make this a better educational experience for all of our children. There's lots of greatness here, but it can be better. I see opportunities, and I promise to communicate with the community, listen to what your concerns are, and do my best to ensure the administration and the school board act in your best interests. So thank you very much, and please go out and vote on Tuesday. We really, really would like your support, and I personally would thank you if you voted for me. Thank you.
Thank you for holding the candidate forum this evening. Thank you all for being here. It's really an honor and a privilege to get to stand up here and hopefully represent all of you. As I said in my opening statement, education is really at a crossroads. It's an interesting time in education. And I stand before you, having dedicated my career, my 26-year career in education, asking for you not to vote for me just as a school board director, but as your advocate, as your advocate. So please, next Tuesday, when you're at the ballot, vote for me. I will be your advocate. Thank you.
I just want to say, it's a really impressive group of people up here that all want to help serve the community, and it all shows me how concerned all of you are here in being here and giving your time up to see what we all have to say. I look forward to the opportunity to help serve the community here and help support the administration with our good superintendent that we have here and continue Peters Township on the course it's going. And hopefully, I will be able to have your support here on Tuesday. If I don't, hopefully, all these great candidates up here will be able to keep steering us in the right direction. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Each school director has a portfolio, and my portfolio is Western Area Career and Technology Center. So before we parted this evening, I wanted you to know that I begged for that portfolio. I believe that not every student should go to college, and I don't know if the last time you paid a plumber, but a plumber can make a darn fine living. Our students who graduated from Western Area last year graduated on a Thursday and began work on Monday, full-time, benefits. So I am a strong proponent of Western Area to make sure that opportunities are optimized for all of our students, and I hope to continue that service. Thank you.
Well, he's the newest member of the board. I recently took the oath, and you have my commitment to take that seriously in terms of our obligation to follow the law, making sure that we engage in fiscal prudence, demanding accountability of actions, and fostering communication and transparency. And most importantly, you have my commitment to ensure that the best interests of our children are met. I believe, based on the last several months on the board and those who know me and my family, that you have seen that I have common sense, and I am very collaborative in making sure that we serve the best interest of this community and our children. Again, thank you for all of you, thank you candidates as well. And again, I do echo Tom's comment that we are very blessed to have a great superintendent and administration that I look forward to continuing to support as we provide the best for our children. Thank you.
Well, here we are. First thing I would like to do is thank the PTA Area Council. When Lori called me, I didn't even wait a second because I knew whatever the Area Council did, it would be done right. And so, let's give PTA Area Council a round. Again, I'm a little bit partial because I have about 20 years of PTA experience myself. Lori and I were talking about it, and so I'm just so thankful that the Area Council decided to do this and that they asked to have the Peters Township Chamber of Commerce involved. Obviously, we wouldn't be here without our candidates. I would do want to thank the candidates, number one, for putting yourselves out there. I mean, most of us would probably agree that it's not always, or maybe never, be fun. You know, it's always a tough, it's always a tough one, but you guys have stepped up, and we really appreciate that. And especially, we appreciate your cordiality and watching Lori and making sure this thing went smoothly, so let's give a round to all of our candidates. And I would be remiss if I didn't talk about you. I mean, it's a beautiful evening here in Peters. I know there's many other things that you would like to do, but we do want to say thank you for attending, for coming out this evening. And for those of you that are watching on TV, we appreciate you taking your time to watch this, and would ask you to make sure that you go out and cast your vote on Tuesday. Thank you.
And this concludes our evening. The candidates are going to stick around. If anybody has any other personal questions, you can feel free to make it down here. And also, thank you to Kelsey from Channel 7. She is here taping this for us. So if an hour and 20 minutes wasn't enough, you can go home and watch it again, or you can suggest other people to take a look at it, but it will be available at some point through Channel 7. So thank you all for coming, and feel free to come on down if you have questions for candidates. Have a safe trip home.